All right, welcome everybody to tonight's planning commission meeting for the city of Tumwater. It's Tuesday, July 11th, 2023, 7:00 PM, and the meeting is called to order. I'll start with the role, all Commissioner Edwards.
Yes.
Commissioner Kirkpatrick. Commissioner Schumacher.
Here.
Great, Vice Chair Sullivan.
Here.
Commissioner Tobias.
Here.
Commissioner Varela.
Here.
Great, Commissioner Full Hope here, and me, Commissioner Roberts. All right, changes to the agenda. Tonight, the only one I have is that we haven't got minutes yet, so we'll just scratch that. Commissioner Tobias.
I thought tonight was the joint session with the tree board, or is that?
Brad's gonna cover that in a second.
We'll talk about that.
But, but no.
Yeah, I was looking at the end, I was like, wait, something's missing.
Yeah, yeah. We have a little different agenda tonight, so yes. Um, let's go then, I don't want to cut anybody off, did I miss any other changes to the agenda? Okay, Commissioner Reports. Alrighty, Managers Report.
Uh, let's see, first, let's start with the update for the urban forestry regulation update. I sent out a email to all the planning commission members. Brief summary, the new Washington Wildlife Urban Interface Code, which is put into place by the state to, to deal with wildfire hazards and the, and the interface between rural and urban areas where it could be potentially deadly and cause a lot of problems. Um, we, we've taken the time on the staff side to sort of go through it and see how that actually works or doesn't work with our current codes for tree protection, landscaping, and street trees. Uh, we've identified enough issues to want to put a halt to it, to the update process until we get the final, final wooey, is what we call it. I don't like the term, but it's wooey. The, the final code version, which is due in October for adoption. Uh, it's a state mandated code, so it would have precedence over any local codes we have of, of the urban forestry related things. Uh, we are in the process right now of talking with a lot of the other jurisdictions. Uh, we've had a meeting with ecology to talk about how it works with the critical areas regulations, the short answer is they both have to work together, good luck. Uh, we have another meeting with Fish and Wildlife to talk about the habitat for animals and vegetation, how that should work. I expect something similar would be coming out of that. My concern is, you know, Gary Oaks and other stuff, how you'd manage that. Um, and then we are also working with the, our legislative people to try to figure out on a broader scale, you know, there's a number of other questions we're trying to get answered before everything comes into play. Uh, once it does, we may be making some changes to the overall amendments that we had processed. Uh, we had actually finished a draft of the ordinance for the landscaping code and a draft for the tree preservation, and we're almost done with the street tree ordinance. So we were all set, do introduce everything and have the joint meeting. So until we sort this out, it's going to be on hold, we'll let you know in hopefully enough time, we've already briefed the mayor, uh, the mayor and the city administrator briefed all the council members. Um, and we've also briefed the stakeholders. So the stakeholders received a similar message to the one I sent to you in the tree board. So that's where we are. Good news is we have time to work on the comp line update.
Yeah, there you go. Did, did you say you don't really have a timeline for when?
Our timeline is, we know by October of this year, it'll, it'll probably be adopted by the city. What we don't know is if what is out is the final, final version of that. We're kind of hoping it won't be, uh, with some tweaks. And also, we're, we're also doing some mapping exercises through a GIS department. There are two real components in that that we're concerned about. Number one is where it's applicable in the city. The broad mapping that DNR had done shows about two-thirds of the city that these requirements fall onto. Those maps, however, once you get down to reviewing it on like a street level, are really, you know, they're not very good, they're too high level. So we're gonna do our own mapping exercise for the city to really hone that in, because we're gonna need that anyway. Uh, and we're also working on specifically, there's some code issues with the rest of the kind of interpretations on. So we will inform you as we know more ourselves.
Good, good.
Brad, who is the "they" and who decides?
Ultimately, it's the state legislature who decides whether they're gonna accept.
Does that happen to the legislature comes in the session again?
Uh, perhaps. It's the State Building Code Council who proposed the changes, and then the legislature. And the legislature actually started this process in 2019 by asking the building code to look into this on a statewide level. Uh, they did so, uh, they, they took the, and what's called the International Wildland Urban Interface Code, which is used in California and elsewhere in the country, made some Washington specific modifications to that, and those are the modifications that ended up in state law. Uh, that was passed by the legislature, and then a date was set to roll the code out and when it needs to be adopted by, and originally it was supposed to be July 1st, but they pushed it back to October. So we're going to see whether or not they pushed it back for any other reason besides just to push it back, or they're gonna make some further changes to it. If there are Washington amendments, they will.
See, they're going to run on October.
I don't know. I don't know if they thought that was a nice time to do it, or, you know, but it wasn't made clear to me why, number one, why it was postponed, and number two, why they picked October.
What do you look at, I mean?
I think that there's a few things, like today, the House Republicans brought up some amendments to the long-term care fee that we're all paying now, and so maybe they are planning those.
And also, this code is one of the many codes that have been updated. Also, the energy code is another big one, so I'm wondering if the energy code itself was something that they decided, well, maybe it wasn't exactly the way we wanted it to be? So I don't know, I, our building official doesn't know either, and he's been tapped into the building code council to find that out, so.
Um, in, I guess in the meanwhile, um, as we, as we meet through the rest of the summer and into the fall, if, if you could maybe update us on what might be going on, if anything, on that? As a part of the managers' report?
I, I will do so, I think the, the next thing I'll be able to bring forward is hopefully the new mapping that we'll have, at least, you know, what we've run based on what the code says we have to do, because I think that'll sort of focus us a lot more on that. Uh, but until then, we're gonna have to wait. See what happens, because what I do think is we're gonna have to tweak what we've done. Either our current code or what we're proposing is probably gonna have to change. So, and I'm concerned it's gonna be a fairly big change. So I, I want to make sure we get everything, the, the state stuff sorted out in place, and then we'll figure it out.
Good, thank you, that's interesting. Go ahead, go ahead, did you have other items you wanted to?
Uh, no, just that the comp plan, um, will be presenting tomorrow to the GDC, the Public Participation Plan. At your next meeting, we'll be bringing up the full schedule of what we're gonna be doing for the rest of the year, and giving you some materials to start reviewing, um, and a little bit of support on how to review the documents and what to look for and so forth. So that's our intent.
Yep. All right, um, Brad, did you have anybody on, oh, somebody, Grace has her hand up. Go ahead, Commissioner Edwards.
Oh, I'm not sure why my hand is up, I don't have a question.
Oh, okay. I don't see anybody else right now. All right, um, let's go to our.
Chuck Denny is our Parks and Recreation Director, he's here to help with Brandon with the CFP, and Mary Heather is our Transportation Manager.
Okay, and I can't quite make, Precision Jade.
Precious.
Precious, sorry, can't quite read that from here, need new, need new prescription, I guess. Um, uh, the person showing is Precious Jade something. Adam Brado, Adam Brado. Um, if you would like to address the planning commission, please tell us your name and your address, and then go on to your comments. You're, you're muted if you're talking. Do you have some time? Okay. All right, well, we, we can't hear you, so. All right, sorry about that, if, if it was a technological glitch, we're sorry. Um, but thank you for coming to the planning commission's meeting tonight. We're. Uh, if, if something went awry, let us know. Okay, um, let's move on to the eighth order of business, our final docket for the 2023 comprehensive plan amendments, the capital facilities plan. Is that Brandon leading the discussion tonight?
I'll introduce everybody, and then I'll turn this over to Brandon, who has the presentation. Uh, Brandon Hicks is our Transportation and Engineering Director. He'll be presenting the transportation-related items on the list. Um, Mary Heather Ames is our Transportation Manager and Assistant or Associate Director of the Department, Brandon, I can't remember which. Um, and Chuck Denny is our Parks and Recreation Director. He'll be presenting probably a number of the projects that are on the general government. So Brandon, if you'd like to, do you have a presentation lined up?
Yes, I do. Um, and just a quick clarification, I, I did not put Chuck on the spot to discuss projects, but he's here to answer questions, and he'll interject knowing more about them than me. So Chuck, if you can hear me, don't, don't worry, I'm not, I didn't put you on the spot unless you want to be.
Thank you.
Um, so I will show a presentation here. Okay, can you see it in the room?
Yes.
Okay, great. Um, so, good evening, commissioners, as Brad said, my name is Brandon Hicks, and I'm the Transportation and Engineering Director for the city. I'm here to give a brief overview of both the general governmental and transportation CFPs for 2024 to 2029. Um, there's a lot of projects in these lists, so I'm gonna be focusing just on the new ones for this CFP cycle. Um, assuming most of you don't remember the projects that I talked about two years ago, or maybe might be new, and for some reason decided not to go look at past meeting minutes, um, we can, we can discuss any of the older ones, I do have a full screen. I can, I can put up a full screen of the CFP so that you can see it easier. I, I don't know how large the screen is in the room that you're in. Um, and then just a couple of things I wanted to point out before I get started. Uh, the staff report said that I'm only doing the transportation CFP, but I am doing both the general governmental and the transportation CFP today. Um, the, the packet did include both of the documents, so we should be good there. Um, second thing I wanted to point out is there are a couple new projects in the general governmental CFP that will not be in your packet. They were missed in what was presented to Public Works Committee in that same, same draft as what came to y'all, so I will go over those when we get to them, but there are three new sustainability projects. Um, and let's see, I think that's it for the intro, so we'll just go into the slides. Uh, so typically, I, this is a wash, rinse, repeat, uh, PowerPoint, we do it every two years in perpetuity, we will until I retire, so at some point, if y'all are here a lot, you're gonna be able to do this presentation for me one day. Um, but just for some general information, a city CFP is, or the CFP is part of the city's comprehensive plan. It's a six-year coordinated plan, and it details capital projects that we're intending to dedicate resources to. The capital projects that make the CFP typically deal with purchase, construction, replacement, addition, or major repairs for public facilities, and then major equipment, too. Typically, in order to make the CFP list, uh, the cost needs to be $25,000, and it has to have a useful life that's greater than one year. Some examples of project types that are in the CFP include large facility projects, streets, utility systems, bridges, parks, and fire trucks. And then, last thing I wanted to point out is the CFP is not a financial commitment. It's, it's a planning document that informs our budget. Um, not, just because it's not a financial commitment, that does not mean that it's not important, because it, it is what lays the groundwork for the projects that, that eventually make the budget. Uh, there are five primary fund pools in the CFP, and they're separated into non-utility and utility. And again, I'm covering the first category today, the non-utility, general governmental, and transportation. Um, the non-utility projects are funded by a variety of sources, including general fund dollars, grants, utility taxes, real estate excise taxes, impact fees, Metropolitan Parks District, Transportation Benefit District, and there's a lot of other sources, but those are gonna be the major ones. And then the utility projects are funded primarily through rates and developers. And then storm projects do receive grants as well. Uh, the capital projects that are included in the draft documents that were in your packet are derived from the many planning documents that we have at the city, and I've got some of them on the screen there, and, and don't worry, Brad, I know there's many missing, and you're, you're already probably spotting a few, this is just what I could bet. Um, there's also projects that are derived directly through preparation for going out to the public for like the Metropolitan Parks District and the Transportation Benefit District. So even if we don't have a standalone plan that happened afterwards, if we had pamphlets or anything that we provided during that, those essentially become part of our plan for future improvements. There are some projects that are added if grant revenues obtained for a specific project type. There are projects that might be added if there is significant development coming in, and the city needs to step in, whether it's work that is in the city's best interest that we have in and plan, um, that needs to occur before development can occur. As long as there's mutual benefit, we, we might pursue them and add them to the CFP. Uh, some are added for major facility or equipment needs, such as building renovations and fire truck purchases. And the last general group are those capital project needs brought forward by council, staff. Um, sometimes, you know, staff bring them from commissions and, and committees and everything like that. So they can be brought forward though by staff and council for consideration. Uh, I provided drafts of the two CFPs we're gonna talk about today in the packet. Um, they're meant as reading material for you to provide, comment on if you have any today or, or even subsequent to this meeting. Um, I do not intend to go through all of them, because like I said, there are a lot of projects. We've got 39 in the general governmental CFP and 26 in the transportation CFP. I do not have the numbers for the utilities, because Water Resources and Sustainability Director Dan Smith actually spearheads those, and he's still working on it. Um, but he'll be, he'll be here to discuss those with y'all at a future meeting. Um, let's see, and as you can see, at least for the two, the two CFPs that we have, so we're looking at, um, 65 projects, and they total to about $160 million, and that's for six years. Uh, so just go ahead and jump right into the general governmental. Um, it, I guess I could stop if anybody has any questions about background and, and what the CFP is or anything, or just go ahead and jump into projects.
I have a quick question, if that's okay? Um, and that is, of the, you mentioned the, the types of funds that are available to apply to these two, to the two different categories of capital facilities we're talking tonight, and of those that are tax revenue-based, I'm wondering whether the city is maxed out on those rates or if there's room to increase any of those? Um, I'm just kind of wondering where we are.
Um, I mean, there, I guess as an example, utility taxes, we are nowhere near tapped out, but I mean, it's sort of a fine line, you, you don't, you, I mean, I guess you understand the, the politics that are involved there, but you don't want to raise the rates too quickly. We are lower than our, than our neighboring agencies, so it's something to consider. Um, but the, I think honestly, the real funnel here, like if we're, if we're lacking money for projects that we think that we want, the real bottleneck is actually staff capacity. Um, so we're looking at 65 projects in the two CFPs, and that doesn't include the utilities. There's, there's absolutely no way that our existing staff, staffing levels can actually accomplish all of that. Um, so adding more projects. I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, uh, trying to come up with more funds to add projects at, at the moment wouldn't, wouldn't really do much. Um, we, we ran into that a bit, at least adding more projects to the CFP a couple cycles ago, and you might not remember, but we got like 45 projects or something in the general governmental, and I've done my best to weed it down, you know? I'll say unfortunately, uh, it's, it's grown back up a little bit this year, but, um, right now, I would say that the workload already exceed, or the, the project that's already exceeds capacity, so adding funding wouldn't do a whole lot at this time.
Great, thank you, I, I appreciate that, that's useful. I see Grace, Commissioner Edwards' hand up, and then we'll go to Commissioner Kirkpatrick.
Yeah, thank you, and I think, I think my question was kind of spoken to a little bit. I was just curious about how the amount of projects this year compared to previous years.
Uh, so it's a little strange, the projects that we're undertaking right now are mostly very large, so they take up more, more people time. Um, is, on the parks front, though, I think we're undertaking more projects than we ever have before. They're slow-going, so they kind of all of a sudden want to pop up as finished, or there might be none that are fully finished until we get the equipment that we're missing, but I think on the park side, we're starting to do really great um, on, on the remaining in the general governmental and the transportation when we get there. We're, we're definitely lacking, and it's because we're taking on large projects, like the operations facility, I-5 Trosper. I don't know that there's an end in sight, but I'm optimistic, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kirkpatrick.
Oh, yes, thank you. Looking at the funding for these projects, now, over the six years, certainly the largest amount of money is, we're gonna borrow $26 million. Now, we're already paying, uh, more money than the incoming fund balance in debt, debt service. Uh, where is the city on their debt, and how are they planning on paying it off?
So, I'm gonna speak in general terms, because I, I don't know the overall city, um, debt status confidently, but, but I do know that we have a very low amount of debt for an agency. I'm gonna turn off my video, because I'm getting, I'm getting choppy video on my end, and I don't want to lose y'all. Uh, we'll see if I can turn off my video. Maybe I'll keep talking before I mess something up. Okay, I'll just keep talking, because I can't find the video button. Um, as far as debt goes, the city's in a really good position. A lot of the debt that you see on this list here is actually their internal loans. And so it's not, it's really, okay, so this fund has excess money than what's needed, so we're gonna, this fund is gonna loan that fund, and so that's a lot of the debt that you see. A good portion of it is speculative, because we, we don't currently have funding for a project that we need on the list, and so if we can't find funding, then we're gonna entertain debt. But overall, the city's debt status is, is honestly excellent compared to most agencies.
Alrighty, go on ahead, I don't think there's any other questions right, oh, wait, hold on.
Commissioner Edwards.
Oh, very good, I couldn't see that, Commissioner Edwards.
Yeah, thank you, I was just curious about, um, because you mentioned about potentially that we would go into debt for some of the projects, like what, do you know what the criteria for that would be? Or at what point there would be a cutoff of saying, no, we don't have funding for this, so we're gonna take it off the list, or?
Um, you know, it's, it's a little bit, there's a two-part answer, I guess, or a trick, it's a trick question almost in my mind. Uh, the only reason I'm saying that is, um, I guess I should start with, debt is actually good when you look at it in, in a different lens, in that the people who are gonna be using it in the future, when you, when you debt finance, are the ones who are paying for it, versus if you don't debt finance it, everybody pays it now, and then they might move, and, and they're paying, they pay for something that they don't use. Or if they move here later, they get to enjoy something that they didn't pay for. So debt financing is, is good in that sense. Um, we're not scared of, of debt financing as long as we have obligated funding. So before we ever take on any new debt, we are required, and, and we would do it anyways, but we find a dedicated fund source, we ensure that that fund source meets the, the debt service, and then that's what determines whether or not we're willing to pursue debt. Um, I have not, uh, so I guess I should also say that, so $26 million in debt on a six-year CFP, and new debt is a big number. Um, a, a good portion of that is gonna be the operations facility. Um, so that, that is a $40 million facility that is in the plan. Um, and so, you know, it, it's gonna be a good amount of debt. Um, a good portion of that is actually going to be external, though.
Good, thank you.
All good? All right.
Yeah, keep going, please.
All right, so again, just jumping into the general governmental CFP. Um, this is gonna be where you find the projects that support programs and activities that most people think, um, or that most people associate with operating a city. Um, so here, you think police, fire, parks, facilities. Um, and then major funding sources for the CFP include utility tax, grants, parks impact fees, bonds, debt, levies, and other miscellaneous sources. And just a reminder, I turned off my video, because I'm getting poor internet. Um, there are 39 projects included into, in the list this cycle. Uh, five are currently in the CFP, or that are currently in the CFP will be removed, and I have those on the right, right-hand side there. And let's see, so Fire Station T1 Improvements was complete, and it has been replaced with Fire Station T2 Improvements. The Deschutes River Flood Reduction and Erosion Study is wrapping up. It's actually, final draft is complete. Um. Sorry, Craft Beverage Startup Facility, um, that never got pursued. I do not believe that we had sufficient funding. And, um, and then between John Don and, and Craft, the, the development, they kind of gave up on the idea. The arts project has gone away, but the program has not. Um, there was an arts project in the CFP, and we're replacing it with an arts program that would not be in the CFP. And a lot of that involves Chuck's team, and then right now, there's gonna be some sort of brainstorming on how we fund it, what does it look like, what is the structure? Um, but you will see in the large facility projects, so when we get to the operations facility, you're gonna see that there is 1% of construction cost earmarked for arts, and, and that could potentially be part of the program. And I see, looks like Commissioner Anthony Varela?
Correct.
Yeah, uh, just a quick, uh, quick question out of curiosity, I see a few projects on there for the golf course. Uh, I don't play golf, I'm, but I, I'm rarely down there. Is the golf course in town a revenue generator for the city? Is that something that we profit from, and we use those funds for other things? Um, or is that, are, are those just funds going in to improve that facility for use for the public?
I think this might be one of those situations where I actually do point at Chuck, even though I can't see him, I'll let him jump in.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay, I don't, I don't have a camera button, uh, somehow. I've never seen this on Zoom before, but I don't have a, a button, I don't know if Brad has control of that.
Did you get it back?
Nope, I just have my mute, non-mute button.
All right.
So I guess I'll just, uh, I'll just talk to you. Uh, the golf course doesn't make a profit in. So I guess I'll just, uh, I'll just talk to you. Uh, the golf course doesn't make a profit in a general business sense. Um, we operate, just like we operate a park, although it does bring in far more, uh, revenue than a park this. Twenty twenty-two, we brought in about one point four million dollars in revenue, uh, at Tom Water Valley, but we spent about two million dollars. Big portion of that is that the original debt when we purchased the golf course, we did councilmatic bonds. Uh, purchased the golf course and did a whole, about a million dollars in improvements and bringing things up to code. Uh, and doing some site improvements as well in nineteen ninety-six. So that bond debt is going to be paid off in twenty twenty-five. Um, we're earmarking some funds after that date to continue to reinvest in the golf course. I mean, like any building, we have to continue to maintain it. We own the Rivers Edge Restaurant Building and everything inside of it, um, although we leased the business out. So we have a lot, a lot of equipment, a lot of things that are aging and will continue to invest money there. Um, it costs us less, I guess, you know? It costs us less to operate the golf course than it does, let's say, a park like Pioneer Park, which makes virtually no revenue. Uh, but takes a ton of staff time and equipment, so, uh. The big endeavor at the golf course and not to go too far astray, because I could talk golf forever, uh, is that we try to use it for other community events similar to what you saw on the Fourth of July. Uh, where we use it to have host the city's biggest festival and then a fireworks show. Uh, we use it for Brew Fest, we use it for Screen on the Green, we've used it for high school graduations, we've used it for proms, we've. Done a whole bunch of different stuff out there. We're trying to provide opportunities for people that don't play golf to be able to benefit and use the facility.
Excellent, thank you. I was just curious. I appreciate it.
Yep.
Yeah, that's exactly what I was gonna say. See, I'm joking. I, I didn't know any of that information. Um, let's see, where did I leave off? Okay, uh, the last project that we're removing, and I don't think I shared screen again. Here we go. The last project that we're removing is the participation in the recent, regional housing project. And that's really a project that never should have been in the CFP is, I mean, the city's really, it's passed through dollars through the city. Now. Okay, there we go.
Quick, quick question on that, though, Brandon, is, yeah, those pass-through dollars for the regional housing project? Does that just show up in some operational side of the budget somewhere? So we are still participating with that.
We relying on grant fund and other sources, but it's outside of the CFP.
Yeah, it's not a capital facility, but we're still participating in that. Okay, yeah. Okay, please continue.
Um, and, and again, so now I'm just gonna go through the new projects and. Um, and if I don't touch on one of them specifically, if it's not a new one, just don't, don't hesitate to jump right in. And, and again, I've got the full CFP that I can bring up on the screen. We need to look at some of the older ones. So I'll go through these quickly. Uh, the first new project is, uh, Prairie Mitigation Land Acquisition. Now, this is, right now, it's speculative. We're gonna try to pursue grant funding. And really, it's intended as seed money for, for the mitigation bank, because once we get the HCP done, it's really just a. Uh, an incredibly expensive document that cost Brad a good portion of his life. That does nothing until we have mitigation, so. Um, we're gonna be pursuing some grants and hope that we can get them. If we don't get grant funding soon. We're probably gonna have to start thinking as a city about different funding options. Because we don't really have a choice. We have to get some mitigation in place fairly quickly. Uh, next new project.
Oh, Brad, did you have a comment on?
Yeah, so on the Prairie Mitigation Land Acquisition, the, the amount of two point five million and the timing of that could vary depending upon. What grants are available and over the course of the six years. Uh, as Brandon mentioned, you know, this will be part. If we're fortunate to get a grant, we're, we're pursuing a number of other options as well.
What could occur at any time during the next six years?
It will have to occur at any time in the next six years.
Yeah, there's, there's actually several projects in. Probably all the CFPs, but ju- definitely general governmental and transportation that will not be able to occur if we can't secure it. So there's, there's gonna be a whole lot of interest in making this happen quickly, and then of course, there's the development community. Um, and there's general, everybody else who wants to do work on the property. So the next one, so we've got a couple here that are on the golf course that are all related to our, uh, NPDES permit. So, and this has to do with stormwater. Um, on site and, and so we essentially don't have a choice. These are projects that we have to undertake. Um, so I'll just briefly touch on them. The first one is the Golf Course Maintenance Shop Stormwater Improvements, and this is about. Um, treating the water that currently, uh, is discharged directly to the Deshutes River with no treatment. Uh, from the maintenance shop. Next one is Golf Course Fueling Station renovation and, and I will probably retitle this one in the next cycle. Because it's probably gonna be a full replacement if it hasn't already started. Um, but this is about getting, um, you gotta have hard, hard cover, uh, where the, where the fueling station is. So concrete and it has to be covered overhead. Um, and, and more than likely, like I said, it's gonna be a full replacement of the fueling station because the fueling station is there is obsolete. Um, I'm a, I'm weird about things being in order and these are not in order, so sorry, I went back and forth. Um, golf course stockpile cover, so the soil aggregate materials like that that they have out there. This is about getting them covered so that it's not eroding and degrading the material and so that the material is not. Uh, eventually making its way into the river. Okay, this next project is, it actually used to be on the list. It's the City Hall Parking Expansion. We had a project in there. Two cycles ago, and I was happy to convince John Don that we didn't need anymore, so we pulled it off. Um, right as COVID had happened because everybody started teleworking and, and now we need it. Uh, very desperately. Um, we have proposed moving it from the original location, which was over by the AG Building. In a grassy area that they haven't developed to our current Public Works Yard after they move out to the new operations facility. Uh, Fire Station T two improvements. This is new. Again, we had Fire Station T one improvements in the last cycle, and this essentially replaced it. Um, and this is, uh, essentially a kitchen remodel. Um, the folks live there around the clock. And, and so eventually you gotta replace it. Uh, this one here is a placeholder, so, um, this is about city participation in a regional, um, control facility. Animal Services Control Facility. Uh, right now, we don't actually really know what the project cost would be or what the city's contribution, contribution would be. Nor when it would happen, so we put it clear at the end of the cycle, and this is just a placeholder. Um, that we'll have more details on in the future, uh, if and when it becomes, uh, more real. The need is real. The need is there now. It's just, we just don't have information.
Brandon, is the, in the program description, um, it says assume a total cost of twenty million, but in the chart it shows two.
Yeah, so, so the, that's because. No, no, it's correct. It's, it's because we're assuming that the city's contribution would be ten percent for the region.
Okay.
So it would be.
So our, our cost is a twenty.
Yeah. So no, total cost is twenty, our cost would be two if, if the total project cost was twenty. And.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. And I think John did that just off of a quick population estimate, because I think we're about a tenth of the population of the county. Uh, okay, uh, so this is one of the ones that was missing in your packet. The next three were all missing in your packet. And they are sustainability projects. Um, the first one is energy and water efficiency upgrades. So we completed, uh, an, an investment-grade audit, which essentially it, it details. But it, it's an account of the energy and water use that we have, and then it kind of tells us where. Uh, we can have savings, um, how much improvements are gonna cost. Um, and then really the goal is, is to have energy or water savings. And so, let's see, this one, is it grant-dependent? It does not appear to be grant-dependent. This is the grant-dependent one, so City Hall and Library Solar Installations. Um, we are. Gonna be keeping our eyes out for grant opportunities, um, to put solar arrays and battery storage on City Hall. And the library. And again, this is a placeholder. We're, we're waiting to see if we can get some grant funding. Then electrical vehicle charging stations. Um, again, we're pursuing grants for this one. These would, uh, the proposals that we would put them at Pioneer Park, Tom Water Historical Park. And Overlook Park. So that's it for general governmental, um, which means I'm ready to move on to transportation. Um, is there anything we want to touch on in general governmental before or maybe circle back at the end?
Yes, we've got a question. Commissioner Kirkpatrick.
Uh, project number eleven, the Community Center. Um, I noticed on, I noticed on the, uh, write-up on that, that they're talking about acquiring, um. Plans and that's in the twenty-four, uh, budget. That's, that's in the, that's, that's the only thing in the real year. Of the six-year budget, uh, that they're gonna acquire the land that's in, uh, sufficient for a, uh. A aquatic facility. And I'm wondering how the city's coming on its, uh, coordination with the City of Olympia. On, uh, they invited us to join them in building an aquatic facility.
I'm so glad Chuck's here.
Uh, I was just hoping you were gonna dig that. Uh, we are still in discussions with the City of Olympia. Um, I work very closely with the Olympia Parks Director. They are. Um, I don't think I would describe it as eager, but they are very open to partnering with us on an aquatics facility. Uh, as you know, we went through a, a hundred thousand dollar planning process for the need for that type of facility that, that the City of Olympia funded. Um, that certainly showed the need and, and the type of facility that the, the region needs. Uh, where, you know, to do a, to do a joint facility like that, we really need a site that's somewhat centrally located to the two cities. If they build an aquatic center, uh, you know, out on the west side, uh, or out Yom Highway, that doesn't necessarily serve Tom Water voters very well. Um, clearly, the, the ultimate site would be the brewery property, but as you probably know, that comes with a myriad of issues. Uh, for development, uh, and for environmental, uh, regulations. So we're continuing to talk, um, you know, we're also talking with the YMCA. Uh, and looking at sites, uh, with kind of a variety of partners that might be around the city, whether it's at the port. Uh, the old DOT site, uh, Tom Water Valley, the former brewery site, um, if we've still got some options. Does that, does that sort of get to your question?
Uh, yeah, uh, the, uh, Sunday, uh, Seattle Times addressed the issue of. For children between the ages of three and eleven, one of the major sources of death is by drowning. Uh, because, uh, so many cities do not have facilities where kids still learn how to swim. Uh, we live in a part of the United States where there's water all around us. Uh, and, uh, there really aren't any facilities unless you have, uh, a bunch of money in your pocket. Uh, to get your kids, uh, taught how to swim. Are you gonna introduce some kind of a swim program into the Parks and Recreation Program? And if so, where are you gonna do it?
We won't be able to do it unless we, unless we're able to build a facility or, or partner on a facility. Um, yeah, the choices locally are, are the Valley Athletic Club and the YMCA's. Uh, that are around. Evergreen College has pretty much shut down their pool to public use. Um, so, yeah, we're, we're extremely limited, uh, for options here.
Thank you.
Alrighty, thanks. Ki- um, please keep going. Oh, sorry. Looks like Commissioner Schumacher. Good eye.
Hey, um, I wanted to ask one quick question about, um. The, uh, the Golf Course Fueling Station renovation. I see that it's grant-dependent, um. But five hundred thousand dollars to put a roof over a gas pump, I guess, is what it boils down to. Um, along with some sort of a. Filtration system, um, have, have you guys considered, has staff considered electrification? Uh, instead of spending money on something that it seems like the whole world is moving away from? Uh, I don't, and I really don't have any knowledge of what's out there for golf maintenance equipment in regard to being electric, but. Does seem like it might be at least something to consider.
Yeah, I'll ju- I'll jump back on this. This is Chuck again. Uh, the, the current pumping system is, uh, state-of-the-art nineteen sixty-nine. Uh, and if you've watched American Pickers or one of those kinds of shows on TV, those are the way the pumps look down there. Uh, like they'd be an antique on a, on a roadshow somewhere. Uh, so it's, it's really a replacement of the whole system to bring it up to, up to code. Uh, and as far as electrification goes, golf isn't, golf and really turf maintenance isn't there yet. There's a few companies, uh, kind of. Not, not the main companies, but there's a few companies trying out some electrical mowers. Uh, and even robotic mowers that don't take staff, that run off of GPS. Um, but really, it's all kind of experimental still. So it's gonna be a while before we can switch from gas and diesel to, uh, electric. Although that would be great, and, and I'm sure at some point we'll get there.
Are the golf carts electric or they got?
Yeah, the golf carts are electric.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, let's, um, I guess we're ready to move on to the transportation capital facilities plan element.
Alright, so the Transportation CFP includes projects that support multimodal programs. And projects to preserve and improve function and safety of existing transportation infrastructure. That was a mouthful. And to provide capacity necessary to accommodate the growth related to planned land use. Uh, the types of projects that you can anticipate here are gonna be those that are related to our transportation network. It's pretty self-explanatory in this one. Uh, major funding sources are utility tax, real estate excise tax, arterial street gas tax. Grants, transportation impact fees, mitigation fees, and the Transportation Benefit District. Hi, Commissioner Schumacher, is your hand up or, or is it from the last one?
Oh, you're muted. Commissioner Schumacher.
Sorry, no, I'm, I'm just reading, um.
Um, okay, so just, uh, going in, there's twenty-six projects included in the list for twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-nine. Uh, we also have five reserve projects. This is the only CFP where we have reserve projects. And I've added reserve projects to this one. I don't know if it was last cycle or the cycle before. Um, specifically because grant opportunities would come up and we wouldn't have anything in our planning documents. And, um, a good portion of the grants that we receive are in transportation, um, in the last six years-ish. I think we're at about thirty-six million, um, in grants in the CFP, so it's a big one. Three projects that are currently in the CFP are being removed. Um, the first one, Capitol Corridor Design, uh, is just about complete, and so that's why it's being removed. Ninety-third Avenue and Case Roundabout. In addition to Capitol Boulevard and Lynnwood Ave Roundabout are being removed because they've been in there for a long time. And we're just not pursuing the projects at this time. They keep falling, uh, back in the priority list. So it was just time to get them off until they're reprioritized in the future. Uh, same as the general governmental, we'll just go through the new ones real quick, and then we can follow up with any of the older ones that you might have questions on. So the first new one is the Percival Creek Fish Passage Barrier Removal Project. And this is actually the, the transportation portion. Um, this was just a storm project focused on replacing the culvert. But, uh, Water Resources and Sustainability obtained a fairly substantial grant, about two million dollars. Um, and so we've added in some, some good street improvements. Uh, the next one is the Dennis Street Roundabout. This one was on the reserve list in the last cycle. And it's being pulled up into the planned list, uh, because it is, after we finish the X Street Roundabout, this would be the next. Roundabout on Capitol Boulevard that we plan to pursue. And so we want to have it in here so that we're ready to try to get grant funding. The, this is a, a brand-new project, um, Trosper Road Capacity Study. And this is really just for the short segment between Little Rock Road and I five. So you, you, you know, any of you who travel there. So you you know, any of you who travel there, really, when anybody's trying to shop, knows that it's it's complete gridlock standing traffic there a good portion of the time. Not in a huge rush to get this one started off right away. That's why you see it towards the back of the CFP, because we really need to see how traffic patterns change with the work that we're doing on the other side of the interchange. We're we're anticipating that there's going to be some improvement in the segment because there will be less cars backed up on the opposite end or or going across the overpass. So we will see. But we're getting it in there because we know that we need to start looking at it because we've already exceeded capacity. Okay, this slide, I'm going to ask you to not look at what you see there. In fact, I'm going to stop sharing and just talk. The reason I'm saying that is because it is it is a nice looking schedule, but I got information from Brad. Earlier, I think it was late last week and I forgot to update this slide, so it's out of date and I don't want you guys to get stuck on it. So at any rate, what I will say is that here in the near future, Dan Smith will be here to discuss the water sewer and storm CFPs with y'all. And I believe it'll be either your next meeting or the one after. I have it plugged in as either late July or early August, but but Brad will add it to the agenda and y'all will know when that comes up. And then there's Brad could probably talk more to what the future meetings are because I might butcher it, but this this will come to y'all at least one more time, I think twice, because you have a an actual hearing. And then we may go to Public Works Committee one more time. If the projects change enough, then we go to council work session. And then finally, we go to council later in the year.
Right, Commissioner Tobias had a question.
Regarding the transportation CFP, have there been any updates on, you mentioned the, you know, roundabout for Dennis Street serving the Capitol Boulevard Corridor and the Trosper Road capacity study. One of the key intersections, I believe, for Tomwater and really the connectivity between the western and eastern portion, western to central, I guess, portions of Tomwater is the Linwood and Second Avenue Southwest intersection that about a forty five degree angle next to, you've got the fire station on one corner, armory on the other, houses on the other sides. But mentioned to the Planning Commission before, asking about the statistics for traffic accidents out there, which does seem to be a cause for concern. Has there been any update on proposal for, say, a roundabout or stoplight at what is currently a a four way stop with multiple lanes all trying to cross at the same time in one of the main arterials for connecting the two sides of the city?
Yeah, so that's that's project ST seventeen. We have received grant funding. We're actually going to be a, we're going to be constructing a region first non circular roundabout that kind of looks like a peanut. I wish I had the the drawing or the the plan up here ready to show you, but it describes it here on ST seventeen. It's it's actually pedestrian and bike improvements for a good portion. I I think it's going to be, I mean, it's it's not all the way north to Old Town Center, but somewhere up near there, all the way down to Linwood. We're going to have new curb ramps. We're going to do some lane narrowing, add in bike lanes. And then at this intersection that you're discussing, where we are actually planning on constructing a compact roundabout. And again, it'll be a unique one to the region. It's going to take a lot of explanation to folks. And if somebody else wants to gab for a minute, I'll see if I can find the picture real quick to show you.
I mean, we already saw the example of the I five interchange in Hawks Prairie, you know, it was a proposals for that design where people were kind of confused what that would look like, but now that it's put in place, it actually, you know, it's really alleviated a lot of traffic for that and that and granted, that's a, you know, interstate interchange, but even still, you you mentioned those. Is that grant dependent or have grants actually been acquired for that project?
We have secured the funding.
You have secured. Oh, excellent.
This is what it'll look like. So John coined it the blob about, and I was trying to call it a peanut of some kind, but at any rate, it's a non circular roundabout. The biggest obstacle here is honestly going to be making it work for Fire Station P two. And and then obviously the school district. So that's going to be the biggest component of the design. This is going to be mountable, so in an emergency, I mean, fire trucks can just go right over it if they need to. But if you try to do it in Honda Civic, you're not going to make it out too well.
Comfortably. Great, thanks. I'm glad you showed that picture. It looks like Commissioner Schumacher's hand is up, but I'm not sure if that's just a holdover.
Sorry, no, I I don't know why it's still up. I I guess I need to put my hand down. I apologize.
I thought I saw another maybe. Commissioner Kirkpatrick, did you have a?
Well, I I do have a question. When you go back to revenue, there's a line that says divert utility tax. Directs us to a ordinance, twenty twenty ordinance. And rather than my looking at the twenty twenty ordinance, which I couldn't find, can you tell us what that three hundred and sixty nine thousand dollars, which is really almost all of your utility tax income is going away?
Uh, so it it is short, sorry.
Going away for several years.
Yeah, so that is debt service payment for an internal loan from the Water Fund to pay off phase one improvements for the Brew Tower. And so I I can't remember the, did you say it was in oh twenty twenty? Can't remember off the top of my head. So it would have been in whatever the year it was that the ordinance was. We had not received donations to pay for Brew Tower Phase One, and I mean, we had a lot of issues with COVID. All the all the planned donations dried up and and nobody was donating anything. And so in order to pay it off, because the general governmental CFP did not have the funds without with with the low fund balance that it that it rolls with, that the Water Fund actually loaned it. And in order to pay it, because we have to have a secure funding source for any debt, that portion of the utility tax that traditionally goes to transportation CFP has been diverted.
Thank you.
All right, you do, you want to continue, Brandon?
I would love to, but I'm actually done.
I'll I'll just quickly ask. I see that there are three reserved transportation projects added at the bottom. Do we need to know anything about some of those? You've got five altogether and it looks like three more have been added.
Let's see. Okay, so I did, you're right. I did not bring up the new reserves. Can you see them? So.
Barely, yeah. I have my sheet in front of me.
Okay, so I I guess I should discuss these. Tomwater Boulevard, Tomwater Boulevard and Henderson Boulevard Intersection Improvement. So you you know, I know that there's some congestion at that intersection right now, but when we still have a pretty big drop in traffic and and trips from COVID. We've got some locations right now where we've still got over sixty percent less trips than we did a month before COVID. Eventually, those trips are going to come back. And so this is about getting in, getting ready because it used to back up really badly. It would be eastbound on Tomwater Boulevard at P and Peak when folks are getting off work. And we also don't have, we're running what's called split phase there because we don't have the ability for three lanes. We need to have a left turn lane for northbound Henderson Boulevard. So really, that project is in there to move the signals out, widen the road a bit, get the turn lanes that we need and try to try to get flow going through better. What I will say is that the the ideal improvement there will be a roundabout. And so you know, before we start spending money on this, we'll start looking at, you know, the preferred option of a roundabout. But this right now at least gets the project in the list and on our radar. Bishop Road Extension. So is it the Little Rock Sub area plan that has Bishop, Brad? Okay, so in in the Little Rock Road Sub area plan, Kingswood and Bishop both connect Little Rock Road to Taiyi Drive. As you're probably aware, there is multifamily development that is occurring on the undeveloped sites there that would be responsible for constructing their share of these roads. And so Odegaard will actually be built out here fairly soon. Bishop, the developer could not build out because a good portion of it is not on their property. And so this is for the city to go and acquire the property and finish the remainder of Bishop so that we have that portion of our transportation network built out. We do have some funds set aside for it already because we had a special assessment for the parcel that cannot build it, and that will fund a a good portion, at least three quarters of the cost there. And then the last one is Little Rock Road and Seventy Seventh Way Roundabout. This is pretty speculative at this point, but it's it's in preparation. There's some pretty major single family land multifamily development down there. And this would be Seventy Seventh Way is also the Black Hills High School Road. It's it's not called Seventy Seventh Way on that side. It's called Seventy Seventh Way on the county side. But it's a roundabout at that intersection. It is not currently in any plan. So right now, as development comes in, we can do nothing but say, all right, it's a signal. And preferably, it would be a roundabout one day as well. And so this is really right now, we have it in there. We can start figuring out how to fund it. And at this point, once this is adopted, we would be able to acquire dedication from development. There's two, three corners left that haven't developed, and so we would be able to acquire right away needed for a roundabout at that time.
Any hand up? Good. Any other comments, questions? Being any. Okay, thanks. Thanks, Brandon and Chuck and Mary Heather for being here. Appreciate that.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Let's go on then to item nine, our preliminary docket for the twenty twenty three annual housekeeping amendments, which is we're carrying over from our last discussion where we wanted to make sure that those that were not able to attend that meeting had a chance to chime in on their thoughts.
Alrighty, so on a yearly basis or or guess over the last two years, staff have gathered proposed amendments to our development code. The amendments are intended to make minor corrections. Okay. Our code establishes a process for amendments that's similar to the one that follows that we follow for the comprehensive plan amendment. A preliminary docket of proposed amendments will be reviewed by the Planning Commission for a recommendation to City Council on what amendments will be part of the final docket. Now, next one. Oh, did we skip over quite a few?
No, we did skip this one.
Oh, I I did do that. Once the City Council approves contents of the final docket, staff will prepare an ordinance for consideration by the Planning Commission and City Council this fall. We have four items that we're going to cover. Did you have a question?
No.
Okay. Manufactured home parks and required open space. For item A, we are going to clarify open space requirements for mobile manufactured home parks that are exempt from subdivisions or divisions of land. Currently, the manufactured home park language isn't included in our code for park and open space area standards for development without divisions of land. So we want to clarify that manufactured home parks that are not required to subdivide are still required to set aside open space. For item B, underground utility requirements, we are to clarify new and existing utilities, including electrical power, telephone, cable, television, fiber optics, and other transmission lines shall be installed underground and establish an appeal process through the engineering services manager. Item number C, town center mixed use subdistrict, but first floor uses. Proposed, we clarify the specific uses that are allowed on the first floor. As the code is written currently, it's unclear what uses would be allowed. And then for D, building heights over sixty five feet for specific industrial uses. Our code was amended to change heights requirements in the light industrial and heavy industrial zoning districts. Currently, it's sixty five feet is the height limit. It's approximately four stories. We are looking at providing a conditional use permit process to go over that sixty five feet height requirement. For uses, I want to go up more. Next steps. We're talking about the preliminary docket now. We have a meeting with the General Government Committee, August ninth, and then a consent agenda September fifth of this year. When we establish the final docket, we will have a briefing October twenty fourth, a work session November fourteenth, and a hearing November twenty eighth. Then we will go to council, provide the GGC a briefing, January tenth of next year, work session January twenty third, and a consideration in February.
Very quickly, some of the members of the Planning Commission weren't here when we did the original briefing, so we wanted to provide the opportunity for we ask for recommendations.
That was primarily you, Commissioner Patrick. We didn't want to leave anybody else. Right then, I guess the, did you have more, Erica?
Nope, that was it.
So we are looking for a recommendation to make that can be moved up to the General Government Committee. Okay, that was a move that we that we forward a recommendation to the General Government Committee for all the items in our housekeeping preliminary docket and seconded. Is that good enough, do you think, Brad? All right, good. Any discussion of that? All right. Let's go ahead and call it then. All in favor of recommending that the general, passing our recommendation to the General Government Committee for all the housekeeping amendment items to the twenty twenty three Development Code Preliminary Docket, please say aye. Any oppose? Very good. Motion passes. Thanks, everybody. And I think that means that we are now at item ten, which is talking about our next meeting on the twenty fifth, July twenty fifth. And I know, Brad, you said earlier, we're going to cover the schedule for the rest of the year. And anything else you want to add to that?
No, I think we'll be providing an update on the the CFP and the endless discussion as well. I don't remember what dates were. Dates were, and I have adjusted everything to, so, but I'll have that.
All right. Um. That pretty much is it. Looking for other comments or anything else, Commissioner Tobias?
Just a reminder, um, I mentioned this last, I'll be out of town for the next meeting.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Yes, good reminder. Right. Uh, we are about at a point at the end of the day here. Any further discussion or motions?
Commissioner Tobias, I move, will you adjourn? Oh.
All right, uh, I, I think it was, um, Vice Chair Sullivan first, and I will take your.
I'll take it. I'll second Vice Chair Sullivan's motion.
Tobias will be our second here. All right, all in favor of adjourning tonight, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alrighty. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
All right, we say.
Thank you.